They're good, yeah. We've all stayed masked up in the bar.
Oh, I think you were trying to my own.
The better I started to yell, the more I said like. Oh, it was awesome. It was so great.
Your house figured out yet?
No. Turn me off.
Yeah.
We're off the lead now. Did you see they sold that house on the corner? It isn't myself. How are you?
Ash. Good. You doing good?
It's like a call.
Yeah. Oh, Andrew.
Oh, great.
That might not be too nice to me.
No. I might have to do that.
You're gonna get ready.
I'm like, woo, I have to do 430.
No way.
Kids gave us a rock for on Saturday night, so.
Yeah.
Maybe a Tuesday night tomorrow will do a little better.
Yeah.
All right, it's five o'clock. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Gail.
Josh.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Alex is via Zoom, I understand.
Here.
Absa. And Andrew.
Here. Do we have approval for the agenda?
So moved.
For discussion, all those in favor.
All right, cut it.
Opposed? All right, agenda passed. Open enrollment discussion, and Dr. Trillo, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Perfect. Thank you very much, President Rickles. I am excited to have this conversation. What I'm going to do is, if we, I don't know who, are you connected there, Jason? Is that you or Gail?
I'm Gail.
Yeah, okay, so Gail's gonna pull this up. So, there's two pieces that I want us to look at and discuss and possibly make a decision on tonight. The first piece is the actual matrix as it relates to open enrollment. I'm going to take a look at some options related to that. And then the second piece that I had proposed to bring forward is if we make some changes in the policy, depending on what we want to do with the open enrollment. So, if you look at the slide, I think you also have it in front of you, if that's easier. In, up on the projector, what we have in front of you is our current enrollment as of, well, January 24th. This is what it looks like today. So, I just wanted you to have that as a baseline, where we are and what that looks like. So, I also, before I go any further, I want to thank Ashley Soma. She helped me put this grid together as we move on, so I'm very grateful to her for that, so I wanted to make sure to give her a shout out. Okay, then if we move across to the next piece, so what we have to do with this is roll it forward for the upcoming school year to say what will our openings look like. So, if you look at the bottom, you go to the bottom and the next tab, we're already there, good job, Gail, it says projected 22, 23. Now, there's some pieces that move a little bit in this, which is that I want you to just be aware of. As of right now, we have five kindergarten sections and one kinder prep, which is why that's listed as six. It's really five kinder and one kinder prep, which is a little bit different, but just so you're mindful of that. I went ahead and took out the green columns because it didn't really give us any information. It always said zero, so I wasn't sure why it was there. So, went ahead and removed those two columns. If you go, if you can see on the current one, it's green. Pretty much always said zero, so we just took that out. Didn't have any impact on the numbers. So, if we just roll the numbers forward, just, I mean, we make no changes to open enrollment based on what we currently have. What you see is it will have some openings in kindergarten, but remember, we haven't had kinder roundup yet. That's coming in April, so while it says if you go all the way across to open enrollment available right now, it says 19, but that's really because we haven't had our kinder roundup. So, that's coming. Then if you look at first grade, we have six openings. In second grade, we have one. Going down the list, third, fourth, and fifth, we have seven, zero, and two. And then once you hit sixth through 12th grade, going all the way down, you can see the negative numbers, which means we're short 10 spots, 18 spots, and so on. So, that is, if we did not add anything or make any changes, that's what that would look like for the coming school year. I'm just going to go through each one of these and then kind of back up if you have any questions. Okay, so the next section, the next one, the change that's made here is strictly in kindergarten only. In kindergarten, we added a kinder section, which looks like a big number for open enrollment, but it's really not because again, we haven't had kinder roundup, so our kinder registration. So, what that would entail is that once we hit the numbers of 20 per section, we would add a teacher. And we anticipate doing that. We would probably have to do some marketing to let people know that we're taking kindergartners just because Gilbert has had a longstanding tradition of not taking kindergartners because we've been full for a lot of years. And that is the change on this particular, everything else stays the same. And so, that's the big change on this particular. If you just opened up kindergarten, you're adding one section when you have the students in place. And then that would open up more space. Okay, on to the next chart. The next chart is adding a section, so we put kinder back at six, so we could mix some of these, but the big change here is adding a section of sixth grade. If we added a section of sixth grade, that gives us 13 additional open enrollment spaces. What does that mean for the budget? It would mean we would need to add 1.5 teachers, which actually, if you go, we don't need to, but if we went back to the previous chart, we probably are going to have to add 1.5 teachers anyway, whether we increase a section or not, because their numbers are getting quite large in the sixth grade. So, the first proposal I showed you was adding kinder. This proposal adds six. And then let's move on to the next one. To keep my notes straight in my head. Okay. This one, what we did here is a change of the matrix of the padding, if you want to call that, that's allowed in open enrollment. So, under open enrollment limit, which is the 1, 2, 3, 4th column over, previously, yes, we had, if you go down, starting in third grade, we had two seats we left open there. If we only left one seat open there, starting in third grade, you can see it brings some of those numbers down, allows for more open enrollment in third, fourth, and fifth. But you can see it still keeps us with 6, 7, 6 through 12, does not have room for growth, as far as open enrollment is concerned. So, those are the options at this point that I have presented in front of you. I will tell you, if you're asking for my recommendation, based on all the numbers that I've looked at, based on the conversations I've had with principals, my recommendation is that we would open a section of kindergarten for open enrollment with some marketing that goes with that, to just let people know that we're opening kinder. And we would hire a kindergarten teacher when we have the students to fill the section. But that would allow us to bring in some open enrollments in kinder. It would allow us to go slow to go fast. Six, seventh, and eighth is already full, and even adding a section, we still, even if we don't add a section at sixth grade, we still need to add a core teacher and an elective teacher. And then same thing at the high school. They're so full that they also are asking for a 1.5 teacher, not related to open enrollment, just related to enrollment. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and that's where we are so far.
Good.
Just a quick question on that, so on the recommendation for the add the section to kindergarten. Now, how much did we take into consideration this, if this information that we've coming in? Do we, I know we're just kind of using what we know today, but we didn't use that in any of these spreadsheets, is that correct?
That is correct, because that spreadsheet is our matrix, and that's what we're using to make those determinations. I really appreciated some feedback I received. I think Tyler, you said that to me, is that, you know, we want to stick to our matrix because that's worked really well for us. So, that's what we're trying to do, is do exactly that, but how does that impact the grid that we receive from IFSS is that we, you know, we're expecting to see more kids come in, but we just don't know.
Yeah, which.
And that's the trouble with, one of the options I gave you of adding to the open enrollment section, that might be troublesome if we do that when we know there's more kids coming in, so.
The second question, you know, if we go the bottom of adding a kindergarten, obviously, then the following year, we have to add another section for first grade and so forth.
Correct.
Just, you know, the elementary as it sits today, the classroom space, it sounds like we would be okay, but what about cafeteria space and that gym space? Because both of those have always been kind of small in that building.
Yeah, it's true.
How would that work?
Yeah, I'm gonna add, Stacy is here, and so I'm gonna have her talk about, we have talked about adding a classroom. We didn't really talk too much about cafeteria, so do you wanna, it is a small space, we're aware of that, but do you want to share with us the impact adding a section would be to that?
Yeah, I think what we've been doing, we do probably have another two more tables, which would be about a second or more. We've kind of tried to stay small, what we could, just due to COVID, but I think we would have the ability to fit that one more section if it's in our cafeteria. Gym is kind of a non-issue because we would just not happy like they're only under a class of 10 anyway. So, I think the issue there would rise if we had 26 kids in a section, then that would be a problem, but keeping class sizes as they are, they have to, it's a general issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that would, go ahead.
There, you're right.
So, kind of picking up on Andrew, so if we did this change and you add a section of kinder this year, section of kinder and a first grade next year, I mean, obviously, in two years, we got three more. I mean, what, and I, we're gonna be talking about the RFP for facility assessment and potential buildings, but that's probably at least three years away.
Yeah.
So, talk a little bit about three sections.
Yeah, one is not super painful, like we definitely have a pretty easy on that one. Two, it's a little tougher, but still very, I mean, manageable. Three, it'll be kind of like what we know, like once you get to the full capacity, it's a little bit more painful and we'll just have to make some hard decisions where the third one goes, but doable, definitely, just, you know, we would know, building isn't, you know, the.
And it all, and also it impacts, when you think about adding a section, and again, the kids would have to come before we add the teacher, so it's important, you know, because I do value the class sizes, and I know I've heard you guys all say that, we want to keep the class sizes what they are. But also, when you add a section, what's like, I love how you said that, one section is doable when we're thought, we're talking about PE and art and things like that. But when you start adding two or three sections, that impacts your other areas of like, what is the, what is the capacity of the art teacher as far as her schedule? What does that look like for PE? You know, one thing impacts another, but that's why my opinion is going slow to go fast helps us answer those questions as we move along, pending the kids come, you know? And the idea of starting in kinder is, the idea is when they come in kinder, then they tend to stay with you. And so, that's why I made that suggestion.
When if they come in kinder, under our current policy, we're inheriting all their siblings essentially from that point forward, right?
Well, and that's why.
Regardless of whether we have room or not.
Well, not necessarily. There has to be room. There has to be capacity in all components, meaning is there capacity in the classroom for that, for their siblings? And also, is there capacity if they have an IEP with special programs? Do we have the capacity in the special program as well? So, some of them have two layers of what that looks like as it relates to siblings.
And just as one little thing for the number, just to make sure, when Ashley was building that, we went, the 89 is reflective of all the kiddos that we, our district resident kiddos, and all the kiddos that we have siblings currently. So, we know typically our current policy is we would take those. There are another eight kiddos on our list, so our app, we just didn't feel like that would fit right there just because of, but just recognize that that, it's not really 89, it's closer to, it's, I think actually 97 is where I'm at, I'm signed up right now.
Yeah.
So, we do know there's some other kids, but I took anybody that was pending open enrollment.
Yeah.
There.
And, and just to also get that whole picture, the latest of lists that I have from people wanting to open enroll, we're at 38. But there might be some crossover there, so we have to look at that. We think it might be a little less than that because some people signed up and then they moved into the neighborhood and they're already here and things like that, so.
Does it say the grades?
It does. I have the grades. So, right now, we have nine on the kindergarten list for open enrollment, but I think Stacy had said to me that seven of those were already accounted for in this chart.
Yes, but I also know we have siblings who have not filled out paperwork because they tend to not do that immediately. So, there are some on that.
So, I have every grade level, but our two biggest grade levels is nine at kinder, and then we have six at ninth grade. And so, but again, that's not, like we didn't look at, do they have an IEP? Do we have capacity for that? To me, this is the next layer, like we talk about this, we look at policy, and then layer three would be at the March 7th meeting, is to bring the recommendations back to the, to all of you about these applications.
I, in general, just from talking to everyone, I think the general idea is that we want to keep the school district small, and that's a general term. That can mean a lot of things, right? Does small mean the total graduating class of the high school? You know, because I don't have a high school kid, so those of you that do, you know, I don't know what small means, because I graduated with 450. But I know like at the lower level, small really, really means the classroom size. So, it seems like adding that section reduces the classroom size, at least at the lower levels, which seems nice, but what does that turn into, you know, on this sheet, you know, 12 years from now? And that, that would be my concern with that, is are we adding a problem down the line? When it's, I mean, it's the benefit of adding a section, but, I mean, are we, do we need the open enrollment to add the section, or can we just add the section and drop the number of students that we already have and reduce the class size anyway? And those are just my thoughts. Do we need, you know, I guess my question is, why consider the open enrollment? And I'm not questioning, that's not a statement of yes or no, the question to me is why? And if we know the why, then we can answer that. And if the why is, well, just to reduce the class size number, I think at first, I'm just, can we do that without open enrollment, if that's, if that's a need, so.
Got a question just quick on that sixth grade, too. You mentioned that you're probably going to add one and a half teachers anyway.
Correct.
I mean, so, I guess if that's within the budget and that's what we are planning anyways, that, that would open up some space in sixth grade, no matter what, I mean, without adding more teachers?
Yes.
And as we flip that, again, that's that, open enrollment section limit, is that what it's going to change on that? We wouldn't add a section for, say, in sixth grade.
We would add a section.
We would add a section, okay.
So, and Mr. Dennison is here to talk, if we need him to, about, we would add a sixth section.
Yeah.
And part of that is their numbers are getting pretty big. Their numbers are getting pretty big just because that fifth grade class that's coming in
Yeah.
is one of the bigger classes that they experience. And so, they would need to add an extra section, and in order to do that, they'd need one and a half additional teachers. So, if we do that, then that would open up, hold on, I'm looking at the rate. That would potentially open up some open enrollment spaces at the sixth grade.
And again, Mike, you, I think you said in the past, roughly 10% increase for that fifth, the sixth grade jump is over historical times, so you're.
So, right now, there are, there are nine kids in these facilities that are residents of the district. Every child, all nine are planning to attend.
Okay.
And then there's one application for a move-in, so you could take that number, which I think is 127, I don't know what's, if they're on.
Yeah.
I think it's actually 127.
Okay.
So, right now, it looks like it'll be 137. So, we're gonna, for the first time in sixth grade, gonna be in the upper 130s. I've not had that before. And then, so if I have some move-ins, like we typically have, you know, if I have six move-ins, then I'm probably looking at adding a section in August, which the move from five to six sections is a pretty massive structural change. And so, there's conversation about doing that yet this spring. Now, if I have 137, that's probably still right at the matrix number of 23 a section, so that wouldn't add open enrollment spots at the current matrix, I think, if I'm pretty close to that, if my math is right, so.
Can you put up the enrollment projections again, because I think for tonight, at least for me, it's one step at a time. Open enrollment, Josh, I guess my thoughts on it are, yeah, I don't think we need to just throw the doors open. But I do think we need to be looking at our demographics and, and what we've got for a forecast. One other comment, just relative to big versus small. All three of our kids graduated from here, but our two daughters started when we lived in North Carolina, and they were in an elementary school with 1,200 kids. But you could have, you wouldn't know it because of the teacher, the student to teacher ratio. And to me, that's what's pretty, that's really important, right? And how you manage your building and what that culture is dictates it, whether there's 300 kids or 1,000 kids in my mind. The thing that, that's really intriguing to me about these, and these are only forecasts, and they're as good as whatever go, went into them. But there's a couple of things I just want to point out, and again, not necessarily for tonight, but we talked about this before. These kinder numbers start really going up right there, right? So, are we ready? Well, if we do a facility planning and we do, and if elementary comes up on top, well, that's probably right. This one, no, we're probably okay. We're built towards that. Here's the other thing that's interesting is, today, Mike, in your building, like you said, you're really tight. Look at these numbers out here, six, eight years from now, there's 60 kids last forecast. So, I just, I'm not saying we should do anything about middle school open enrollment today, but I think we stay pretty close to what do these forecasts look like. And maybe next year, we have that conversation and see, are we tracking that way? Because there's some big swings in there, which IFSS evidently thinks that's the demographics that we've got. Open enrollment will change that, so we need to acknowledge, hey, if we add a section, that's going to change that. I personally would be against changing anything with the student to teacher ratio today.
And also, kind of going back to Josh, to your question and your point about the open enrollment pieces, that, a couple of things, that as I joined the Gilbert District, one of the things that I heard loud and clear from everyone, including the community, and I feel passionately about, is not changing teacher-student ratio. I, I know the research very, very well of what it takes to make a difference academically for kids, and that ratio is, you know, if you change a classroom from 24 to 25 to 22, it doesn't really make a difference when you're talking, you know, long-term research-based reasons behind it. It has to go almost down to 15. But it doesn't make a difference in morale and that, kind of what Tyler was saying, that feeling tone of that we're a small community school, absolutely. So, I don't support an increase in increasing class size. This doesn't do that, doesn't touch class size. It can, like you said, if you put in an extra section, it can't bring those class sizes down, but that's not the why behind it. The why behind it really comes from what I heard early on from, that we've had so many people kind of knocking at our door and saying, hey, can we come to Gilbert? We love Gilbert. Can we come to Gilbert? And we have said, you know, no room, not able, doesn't fit the matrix. And that's fine, and that might be the decision you make tonight, too, to say, we don't want to change anything, and that's, that's fine. But I know that it's something that we have talked about over and over, to say, where could we, you know, crack open the door a little bit? And maybe it is in kinder, and that helps us that by the time we get to kinder kids getting to sixth grade, as Tyler just pointed out in those forecasts, then that does build up some of those numbers in six years when they get there, or seven years when they get there, so. And they move along with us. If it's determined down the road that we need a new building for elementary, we're able to provide for that as well, perhaps. So, that, just to answer your point of what you asked.
That's good, and I, yeah, I can understand that. To me, I mean, just from a list of priorities, so yeah, keep the classroom sizes low, as low as, as low as reasonable, right? We try to do that with what we have. If we can't do that and we absolutely have to, then we can take care of our existing districts by bringing in open enrollment. The last reason to open enroll for me would be just so that people can come into the district, you know? Because like, we bought a house to come into the district, so, for that specific reason.
Yeah.
Which I know, when you look at, yeah, buying houses can be frustrating nowadays, but.
I'm right there with you.
I'm not saying it's not a reason, but of all the reasons to increase open enrollment, it's like, it's down here.
Yeah.
You know, because that seems somewhat arbitrary to me.
Yeah.
When we're here to take care of people that are paying and a lot of people that made life-altering decisions to buy into the district essentially.
And we did hear from Travis, you know, when Travis, is it Swire? When he was here and did some of the projections, that's kind of where we were talking about, too, is that, you know, it does help with the financial stability. Yes, we're in a good position. Gail does excellent jobs. You all make incredible decisions, and we're, we're in a really great space. But bringing in a few open enrollments also help with that stability. So, if that forecast of like, if you want to use sixth grade as an example, five years, six years down the road, we drop by 30, that's a whole different picture, and if that helps us with that stability piece, that's the other piece of this.
Yeah, it's, it's a tool to support
Correct.
what we need over here, not just something that we add in.
And it's not perfect, because there are lots of moving pieces to it, but it is something.
And I just, my quick thoughts on this is I just, from a timing standpoint, you know, this, this IFSS data really kind of shook me up a little bit with some of the numbers they're projecting. Again, it's all we know. We don't know what's going to happen, but we gotta trust the experts in this. So, you throw those numbers on top of it, and then you throw in the fact that we start to open this up a little bit. I mean, again, we're three years away, best case scenario, if we decide to make additions to buildings here. Or we're gonna jam pack a building for three years that we can just hold a little, my, again, my opinion, we can wait, hold tight here and just wait and kind of see what happens and see if these numbers do, because if these numbers come through, we're adding a section. I mean, we're adding a section in one more year, if 143 comes into kinder. So, and that's just my opinion on it. I, I will ask, this is kind of on a sidebar, not matrix-related, but the priority. I know you had some notes here in our meeting, you know, it's kind of the priority for filling open slots. Do you want to make your comments on those?
Sure. Let me jump to one other thing first. The other thing to consider, one of the things that we don't have in our policy, if I recall, Gail will correct me if I'm wrong, is we've had the conversations already about what's the tipping point when we get a new teacher. And so, and that's not really related to the met, matrix of open enrollment. That's kind of goes back to the projections, that if you have, you know, so many kids walk through the door, and you have two over in every classroom, then we need to put in a new teacher to create that new section. That's a separate conversation, but it is something that I think we need to look at moving down the road as we look at those projections. So, I'll just put that there and set that aside. Back to the policy piece that I have for you tonight is just, in our policy, it just talks about, is there space available? At the bottom of your notes from last board meeting, if you don't have it, I think. If you don't have it, like Gail said, you gotta pull that up. The last section talked about priority for opening, for filling open slots. This is related to open enrollment. If we don't change anything in open enrollment, meaning if you don't have any section in kindergarten or we don't do anything like that. Perhaps what we want to consider is our priority for open spots that are available. And when I'm talking about this, the first one related to. Contracted regular employees that work for the school district get to bring their children. That is something new. It is something that is, thank you, Gil. It is something that is kind of a perk in the sense of, you know, some districts are giving a $5,000 signing bonus and a. $2,500 moving bonus and for teachers in math and science and different areas. So this is looked at as another opportunity to say to families, like, we want you to live here in the district, but if you don't, but you work for Gilbert and you want to bring your children, you could. And that is one suggestion that if it was agreed upon, would go into the policy of open enrollment. And then the other pieces are not really new. It talks about members of the family. Um, and then it goes into if they, um, this is something with the building. If you're building a house in Gilbert and you want to start, that's the next one for priority and then any of remaining slots. Um, based on capacity for everyone, including special needs. So that's the other component is policy.
And again, number one there would be towards open enrollment, not guaranteed, but if there is a space available.
Well, and that's what we have to decide because the way that's written is we said automatic approval. So if you're hired, you get to bring your child.
Regardless of our space.
Yep, but that's only if you guys want to do that. If you can take that off and you could still say pending space available. And it's considered, what I would consider it to be is kind of a. A little, uh, perk is the right word, but just a little bonus of if you work here and you want to bring your children. Now. The piece that I haven't done the research on, as I was thinking about this today, we were having a conversation today, is how many employees currently work here? Who don't bring their child, who might make a change if they wanted to next fall? And what do those numbers look like? We'd have to.
That'd be some, I don't know, I mean, you know, your staff and a handful or, you know.
We'd have to ask them. Yeah, cause you just don't know, cause that's a pretty big decision for families to change schools. But it could kind of goes back to some of our conversations. It could impact their daycare, you know, or their after-school care.
I like the idea of it. It'd be, I'd be interested to know what the numbers are.
Yeah, we have to, we might have to bring that back and I have to do a survey of staff.
I would imagine it would probably open the candidate pool a little bit better.
It could potentially.
Know what it is right now, but.
We don't know.
It actually then written that way wouldn't even be part of the open enrollment.
Right, it'd have to, it'd have to be part of. Yeah, I mean.
It's independent of it, if you say.
But it's part of your open enrollment policy. Maybe.
It depends on when, when, when the staff starts and when we run and when we lock in. Cause if that, if the, if we lock this in before and then, okay, it's just most of the staff till we start in, you know, June or July, August, or whatever that is. Then it's after. Which, which way do we push, put the pressure on those, on that matrix?
But then that gets back to kind of the tipping point of a new teacher, right? Because it goes, if you're both, I'm agreeing with both of you. I like that. So it's. It's sort of the, cause March 1st is the deadline for open enrollment, so that's gonna come, you know, in a week or so. And then we hire people and so, and if it's automatic, then that's separate. And then we might have that third trigger, if you want to call it that, where. If there's a tipping point of this many kids in this particular grade level and we already have that many, we might have to add a teacher.
Back to your, back to your comment too, how you said that about them building a house, how does that, how does that work today? So if you're gonna build a house, what's the waiting period?
We've, we've had, um, we've had some calls at Pinkporties from parents that are currently building a house. But it won't be ready until October. So they were asking, can we come in August? And with the proper documentation, we have said yes, because they're going by this date. And then it is in the policy. Um, it's stated in there that, uh, by that date, they have to show documents that they're moving in somewhere nearby.
Back to this matrix mention, so. I guess what I heard earlier is I, we need to add another column for like maximum class size then, too. I mean, almost, just so we know, we gotta flip it over to another section?
Yeah, we could add that to the matrix.
I mean, that.
Or we could put it in policy.
Yeah.
That says.
At what point do we flip to another section? Is that written anywhere in our policy?
No.
I mean, if we have 29 kids per section or 30 kids, I'm just making a number. At what point do we say, oh, we get one more, we have to add another section and split, divvy this up?
Yeah, do we give it a range and make it firm? Cause it is nice from a budgetary perspective, we can forecast a little better. Say, three years from now, we need to make sure we have this much room.
Yeah.
For additional staff.
A range is better than firm. Um, it gets more challenging with the middle school and the high school. Because you know, your core classes are one thing, but then you might have a whole group, a, a larger group, let's say in, um. I don't know, I can't think of a class. I want to say CTE, for example. You know, you might have a bigger group in one particular class. Um, and then that makes a smaller, you, you might have a smaller group in band and then a bigger group in that, you know, so it's a little bit different in middle school and high school, but. I know the teacher or the principals do a great job of keeping a close eye on that to make sure that it's.
So Stacy, Mike, or Carrie, we're probably, I mean, we're at basically five sections now. I'm trying to remember when we. Flip, was kind of almost across the border, maybe it was a couple of years when we went from four to five or what?
I thought we had to be two above in each section. Uh, to say that, I mean, each, like each section of a grade.
But I mean, just asking when we did that, was that? Was that over the course of a couple of years? Because, I mean, when our kids first came in 2002, there was, I think, three sections in some of the grades.
Yeah, so over this span of the, the 13 years I've been here, the first few years, we went from four to five pretty quickly. And then even in those first three years, we had one section of six. Um, that by the time they got to Amy's building, they were still there, but we went at kind of much class sizes a little higher as we went through. But yeah, pretty much within the last, for the last 10 years, we've been three.
Yep.
So.
And this whole thing on Kinder has been something that you've kind of juggled for a number of years, right? I mean, we've had that conversation of, do we go to another section? Well, I don't know if we're gonna have the kids. So to me, this open enrollment, but I mean, basically we're just saying we're going to six sections. And we're gonna, we're gonna get those kids here in a couple of years anyway. But it kind of takes the guesswork out. And I think there's been a year or two where we kind of go, I wish we probably would have added a section. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I know the year we went six sections, okay, we did, we did pretty late. I think we did like the July board meeting, in fact. And, uh, what we knew is we had 15 kids on the open enrollment list, so we knew that our number was here and. If we had kids to fill it out, so we knew what our waiting list was at that time. And kindergarten's unique because their open enrollment difference, they're not that, it's not so much.
So I, I, I mean, if we're ready for a motion, but I. I'm comfortable with a sixth se- section for Kinder.
So it'd be a seventh, actually, though, since we have six.
With, with you include the, the pre-K, yeah. I don't, as far, I, I like the idea of the teacher or staff, but I'm kind of like Josh, I. What, what are the implications there? I mean, is that five more or is that? 15 more that now all of a sudden we're bumping several classes? I, I don't know, but what? Really, the timing for that, I mean, I guess it's the same time as you decide tonight.
It is, cause we're, we're looking at hiring staff now, but I do agree with you in the sense of that. I think we need more data, you know, related to, um. I think for new, you know, we could say new staff tonight, if it's a policy change. Or I could gather the data and bring just the policy piece back on March 7th, which is only two weeks away. It doesn't really impact the decision that you're gonna make. It possibly could not impact the decision you're gonna make here. You could make one decision about the matrix and about what we want to do. And then once we look at if there's, you know, three teachers that want to bring three kids and we share that with you on the March 7th about the changing the policy, then we can change the policy. If you decide on March 7th not to change the policy, that's fine. Um, and we should have that data anywhere for that.
Want to take a motion?
Did you make a motion there?
I'll move to add one Kinder to the class to make it a total of seven, including pre-K. To this year's matrix, no other changes.
So. Further discussion? Alex, what's your thoughts? I know you're online.
Um, yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, yeah.
There we go.
Yep, um, so yeah, just a few thoughts. Um, I know everyone always wants more. Uh, everyone always wants more storage and space. It seems one of the key. Complaints amongst the facility and elementary was, uh, storage and space. Um, like you'd expect it to be, but if we added. Um, a section that would roll forward in the first and second over three years, we're adding almost 20%. To that population, that's even before that population bump that ISSS is, uh, projecting. Um, which obviously you can imagine would probably place quite a strain on that. So I think opening, uh. Open enrollment at that level might be a, a better conversation when we discuss building a new elementary school, so you can properly plan for that. Other than that, um, as far as a policy goes and allowing a child to automatically enroll with a, uh. With, with someone who's employed by Gilbert, I think we definitely need to have more data on that. And I don't think it'd be. It'd be fair to just, uh, apply that for, for new faculty coming on board to those who have been with us for so long, so. That's my thoughts.
Back to Tyler's motion here. So if we open up that seventh section. Our plan is to then recruit for kids to fill that? Is that what I'm hearing? So we would have whatever. Kids that are coming in or should we wait and see how, how long we wait before we want to see what's coming in first?
Well, the, the only thing I would say is what I don't want to do is exactly what Stacy described, is I don't want us to wait till August. I mean, while she's wonderful and, and I'm sure there's a wonderful kindergarten teacher who's gonna move here from Pennsylvania in August that we would hire. But, um, that puts a lot of strain on the school and on the whole system when we do it that way. So I think we would have to, you know, come together and kind of say, look, we're gonna give it till this date. Um, see where we are and then, um, and that doesn't impact really open enrollment. It just says. Um, are we getting families coming? And if not, then, and then we hire that next teacher. And if not, then we close, then we go back and say, okay, we, we come back to you and say, we want to shut that down. Cause it's too late in the year or in the summer, if you want to call it that, to not add that person. To not.
And again, my only worry, I mean, I, I, I want the small class size. My only worry is just space. I mean, I, if we got three years. Of this in that elementary school, cause again, I think we're roughly three years away. You know, we're gonna jam all these kids in there for three years and we can, in my mind, wait a year. And then maybe get a little bit closer to building that, you know, that new school. Now again. There, again, per the data, they're coming. So I mean, I think the section's coming no matter what, we have to do it. So whether we do it now or per the data, if we're gonna do it next year. So we're talking about one year right now of adding these kids. My only thing is just the timing of it. That's, that's my concern, but I'm all for it. I, I want to keep class sizes small. I don't want them big. Um, worst case scenario, we've got one year that may be a little tight. But again, it all goes through, so. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. We will add one more section on the Kinder for next year. Next, we have a facilities, uh, possible action for facilities ma- facilities master planning, RFP.
Hmm, first is to know, right? Or not?
Nope, I, I, not here, I have RFP, so. We go, go to Novo.
They're here.
Yeah, go ahead, you guys are here. Nope, go right ahead. You're good. We need to stop talking anyways. Hey Patrick, too, I'd like to tonight, uh, we focus not so much hit on this stuff. Tonight, since this is gonna be kind of in our next phase of what we're gonna go with here, but just kind of focus on our facilities as they sit today.
Yeah, yeah. You don't have to talk about any of this serious stuff if you don't want to.
No, I, I just hold off on that, that's okay.
Yeah, wasn't planned, so perfect. Thank you for the time tonight. Thank you for meeting with us. Uh, yeah, Patrick Davis with Novo, and I brought. Team here with me today. So Ken from CNVR, CNVA Architects.
Yes, I'm a principal at CNVR Architects. I lead our educational practice here in Central Iowa.
That's so different than Joe who.
Yes, I work with Joe and unfortunately Joe, we're here tonight to, we had to go to the presentation instead, so I'm doing my best, Joe.
And then the guys behind me, we have, uh, John and.
Jay.
Yeah. Jake from KCL Engineering.
Uh, so I'm a senior campus engineer with KCL Engineering. And we walk up facilities and help populate the facility assessment data and just kind of get familiar with your facilities.
Same thing, I'm from KCL, I'm a senior electrical engineer, uh, also lighting designer. Uh, went through the facilities. We had a technology engineer with us, well, who did a thorough, in-depth review of the technology systems, which would be. IT infrastructure, fire line, PA, et cetera. So, um, all that should be illustrated in the reports.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Not just.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, not just, you are the.
We didn't know if we give the leads on mechanical electrical or not, but we just wanted to be here in case we do.
If there's any questions.
We'll let Patrick run the show and then if, if anybody has questions that we can tell upon, we're glad to.
Tyler says, what's going on? Right?
Right.
Just replace them, right? No. All right, so what, we're gonna go kind of into the weeds today. Andy says, let's get to some weeds, so we're gonna talk facilities. And we'll go through first what our methodology was as we look through this. So. As we were walking around the buildings and then started inputting this data. We broke the buildings down into different systems. So rebuilding envelope, your roofing system, mechanical system, your electrical system. To understand and make up and use each one of those. From there, it assigned. An estimated useful life to those systems. And then that could, from that estimated useful life, based on how old it was, if your rooftop, you know, if it's 25 years old. We would either kind of flag that almost on its own as this is ending to any, getting close to the end of its useful life. Or, uh, say it's still okay, you've got 15 years left on that. So that could flag, uh, what I'm gonna call tonight as requirements or renewals. And then from there. Another thing that we could do as we were looking around to make a requirement was if we saw, saw something specific that needed to be. Noted or flagged as something that needs further investigation. So. From there, we, as, but what I want to really get from you guys tonight is to understand some of the priority. Uh, priorities based on what these requirements that we came up with. What those are, what those mean to you and where we need to place those. So. If you go to the tab on the back, I'll just kind of put a baseline and you saw some of the, or sign the back, it's one of the tabs. You'll see a couple of graphs. So as we're going through this, just know that what we're working towards is. Through this conversation today, we'll understand when, where it sits on, on the priority for that item. And when it is, when it would potentially need to happen. And then where that, how that eventually gets into potential costing. And then over on the public graph. How that plays into the approach for funding and how that will play over time with those bigger, bigger items. So another note on pricing, super high level. Right now, this is taken out of context of, is this built into another project? Have we, is it fully investigated? No, this is just to give you guys an understanding of. Hey, this could potentially be in this dollar range, just could potentially be in this dollar range. So nothing. Don't take any of this for, we're going to go take it to the bank and get a project going. Cause obviously this is just an assessment level, so just putting that down as a baseline, so. Yeah, and then. The estimated useful lives based on ashtray about of what these guys have and then just industry standard best practices. And then for the costing, the way that it came up was through using RS means as a uh. Baseline for construction costing. So any questions based on what I just laid out? The methodology or what I shared with you last week as far as those. Uh, the information that I had given out. So we will start with the elementary school. So the way that these are broken out is the first. The first book essentially, I don't know why they made it into books, but the first one is the elementary and then intermediate. And then the second one is middle school, high school, and we'll just dive in and start discussing. So. The elementary school, the way that, one more thing, as we're working through these, the way that. It's going through and the items come up is based on priority as far as how I, how we saw them as a. Ass- assessment team looking through. So it it's not going to go inside outside or we're sticking to just the. Mechanical system or the electrical system. It'll kind of jump around, so bear with me with with that. So. We'll just start the first page. So we've got potential exterior brick item to look at when I was talking to Stacy. Stacy, she said, yep, that's been there for a little bit, but that, for that, something like that type of requirement would be, hey, just monitor this over time. The next would be the clock system renewal. So. Look at, potentially looking at options for improving that and we're talking with Stacy, the clock system and. The the bells, don't talk to each other, so there's kind of time discrepancies with within the classroom as far as. What's on the phone and what's on the clock. So that could be something to look at as far as what needs to be taken care of there.
Just out of curiosity, their technology there, is there? I was looking forward to some of the different things like the paging system, are there? Have we gotten to the point that that's a, that's one product now that you can do? Cause they're all kind of doing the same thing.
With the paging system, so it's one product that handles everything, box and page.
Right, it's data going from one spot to another.
Yeah, is it the case that one product solves all that or?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a product that can handle all of that. Basically, not been beaten, different than doing two fifteen thousand dollar projects. No, I I think a lot of it, again, keeping high level approach as Patrick's describing this, is this is assuming. Not taking it into individual projects, recommendations or different scenarios, if you will. This is just looking at the system as it is. Replacing it with a similar like system. So there are numerous different avenues that the board can take when a project is assigned. So for instance. Just because a item says it costs this much does not say that there's different avenues to reduce that price because of difference. Scopes. Yeah, so this is apples to apples.
Correct.
There may be an orange now, something like.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, there's grapefruit and banana.
Open it.
Yeah, and then technology, yes, exactly.
Technology is changing quickly. So they saw that, some of the techno stuff.
Yeah, in the interest.
Probably something like that, it's all like that now, so.
Yep, yep, yeah, so there's.
So. I appreciate all the depth that's here, but I'm wondering if we can go through these fairly, well. Here's, so here's what's obviously on the table is, well, are we going to be building a new elementary school in three years, right? And and so when I'm looking at this, and if you guys want to say, hey, no, let's go through it. I'm going, is this mission critical for the next three years? Cause that's kind of how we handled some building projects in the past. To decide, well, we got to do it anyway, even if we tear the building down in three years, right? So kind of mission critical on elementary so that we can get to intermediate. I mean, I'm assuming you're going to want to go through all of this, right? So. Maybe kind of just click along and say, mission critical, hey, if you guys don't do this, there's, there's a problem in the next year or two.
Yeah.
Versus.
Do my best to stay out of the weeds.
No, no, I think those are good.
The only thing would be, um, you know, some discussion around reusing the building for something else. And whatever that may be.
Well, that, yeah, this part, when you guys.
So that's like, that's one consideration that I would have, like, you know.
You know, yeah, and that, that's a huge, what's your, what do you want to invest in this thing?
Yeah.
To keep it going for three years and then what, what is this?
We'll just keep it off of the kids' heads for three years.
Or it needs to be safe, right? It needs to be all those things, but um, that's at least what's going through my head.
Yeah, cause I see some of this as, well, you know, five years from now, if we're using a trade program or something different, you know.
Yep.
If we decide to do that.
But what I would see there is, I mean, for tonight, at least I think we're getting an understanding of, well, what's some? What's, well, this is what Christine asked for, I think is great, which is, hey, what are some things that we got to do just maintenance wise? If if we do decide to build a new elementary, then I would assume many of these things we won't do or. In that master planning role, we're going to repurpose the building. So yes, we will, but. I look at that as another stage.
Yeah.
Myself.
And if I may, um, in our conversations that we've been having, um, you know, Patrick said a nice job of kind of, and that's, I think where we're headed, but. An overview, when I said, so. Elementary, got a lot of things to fix there, right? And he said, actually, I think we need to look at. This school, which was.
Well, so.
No, so that's a conversation, I think we need to, maybe not tonight, but that's something that. That's an important conversation to have with this group is that. This is what we're recommending for. What's the next thing we need? You know, what's tomorrow look like? What's two years from now?
Yep.
And yeah, so from moving front to back in just the elementary one, that's, these are the items that we saw would. Need attention sooner rather than later and depending on where that master plan takes you as far as what those main signs look like is where that would fit. So if you go back to the tab where. In the the graph, it shows the way that that setup. They do with, do within one year of inspection, they're on the left. Gives kind of a picture of if we want to take care of these item, these things that were noted as. Could be done in the first year. And then that's, that's just a discussion between us or Dan or. The building custodians or principals to say, yup, we we are going to do, we we actually don't want to do any of that crap. Cause we just don't, we don't need to, or we really do need to do this, that, or the other thing. So. Yep. This is, this is not our final assessment. There's that we can understand what needs to happen and. Then how to play that out over the next three years, more importantly. And then what does that look like when even bigger renewals, bigger items come up? So.
Right, so if I'm, I'm looking at. Well, that chart that you're referencing right now, and Alex, sorry, you don't see this, but the three million dollars basically, a little more for three million. Over three years.
Yep.
Specifically elementary and I guess my, my point for tonight is, well. Which, if any of these are safety concerns, or I don't know, what else would be on a list?
Yeah, the number issue too is just that we mentioned the heating and that.
Right.
And I see HVAC is a, as a five year, I'm thinking, well, I thought we had issues there now, so I.
Sure, well, yeah, let, well, I'll start high level on what those items are. So.
Yep.
He said HVAC. I was gonna do HVAC.
Yeah, so um, it depends what your vision is, right? And I mean, your heat pumps are still working currently. They're just a lot of trouble and you're having, you know, you're having some that need to be replaced now and some that are still going to have useful life remaining. And so I think the question is that if you're really on a three-year horizon, does it make sense to replace them one at a time if needed? Or does it make sense to do the renovation project now and then, and then you're good?
Yeah.
And I think the question comes back around to me on what I would recommend is how are you going to use the building after? I think that's an important thing to be in consideration because I hate to recommend. Doing a full replacement of them if you're truly not using the building. Right? Uh, and and I know it's a pain and it's, and it's a challenge. But that might be where we come back and recommend, alright, pick your top five problem areas, replace those heat pumps. And then what, you know what I mean? And and see if we can limp along, if you will, you know, to get to where we're in the new building, right? I I think that would be. And and it's a little bit of a point of what the board thinks about how we can still be after.
Which depends on how much it costs to renovate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I understand.
Cause then once you're getting into this, into the ceiling to replace the heat pumps, how far do you take it? You, you do the. The tile and grid at the same time.
Do we have any asbestos in here?
Nothing obvious for what I would say, um, in those specific areas we're talking about, I meant to jump out.
Yeah, some of those locations that we typically see that are not visible is going to be any kind of glue for any kind of carpet tiles or any kind of ceiling tiles that have glue on. So a lot of the glue is probably some of the stuff that you can't visibly see that's there. Oh, sometimes it's pipe insulation.
Yeah, but you're in that vintage.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that there's. When was it about there?
Seven.
One, seven.
Yeah, those heat pumps are nineteen ninety eight. Thank you, yeah, twenty years old. So I mean, I mean, they're there, they're. If you're staying in the facility, we'd absolutely recommend people replacing it today. Right? I I mean, that's how we would, but knowing you're on that three-year horizon, it's just a difficult, you're in just an odd spot, right?
Well, if we do end up using it, that makes.
Then that makes that.
It may be a part of a, you know, a larger renovation plan.
Yep, yeah, and I think.
It sounds like I have decided, but I haven't. I have.
The LED and the ceilings and, you know, once we're in there, it makes a lot of things that you want to do economically at the same time.
Yes, there's, there's going to be a difference of what's a economical maintenance item versus what's a maintenance safety item. I think that's what Tyler's alluding to is that there's a lot in this report that is safety based. That still may not need to necessarily be done immediately because you're still within. A safety range of your building right now, kids aren't getting hurt, you're having a safe space. However, there are. Code safety concerns that we didn't know that we didn't put in the report. So like. Outlets need to be tamper resistant now at all educational facilities. Um, the emergency lighting and egress light throughout the building needs to be looked at and updated. Uh, the fire alarm system, even though. The district has gone through and added addressable systems for each building. Still not having a voice notification system, which is a speaker system with a audible. Um, voice recording or a digital voice recording over. Now it's still just horn and strobes. Um, it's that kind of stuff that can be done over time. It doesn't need to be do immediately, if that makes sense. Still a safety and it's still a code concern, but it's one of those gradual maintenance items that can take place. Um, some of the concerns that I would see as a safety that should be done immediately is any kind of live exposed electrical parts. So any kind of panels that are unlocked and has breakers missing, um. A chance for any kind of short or a shock uh, scenario. Uh, the intermediate school, wrap area, but probably that's one of the biggest. Ones that I heard the most about from the site as a whole and the entire um, campus. Or electrical distribution having issues. Um, anyways, we get back to the elementary, but that's kind of. Where we're at on the safety spectrum for electrical. A lot of the maintenance stuff is going to be LED replacement, adding controls, um. Yeah.
And then a couple, couple site things, drainage, the the drains that come right out on the, under the sidewalk in front of the school, that's something that. Uh, we reckon, we see, we recommend is probably a hazard, it's probably a a headache for the district. The playgrounds, maybe not updating them to be more accessible, uh, I'm not going to tell you to tear your hill down, but.
Got to be careful.
I'm not going to say it. The, so the partitions between the classrooms to from a, you know, from an architectural standpoint is. Those don't offer really good sound barrier between the classrooms and there's noise disruption between teachers. So. What would it look like if you were going to stay in that building to make that a permanent solution? Storage, there's stuff in everywhere and. Should, something with that should be addressed as far as getting stuff out of, out of those back hallways and and whatnot, so.
Especially off of the transformers in the kitchen area of the receiving room. There's two transformers and two panels and the kitchen staff has a jam pack full, so.
Yeah, so those, those are the sorts of things to me that.
It's all maintenance.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So those would be the things, Christine, that to me that would be. High priority of this right now and, you know, if there are any electrical or anything that's safety related. Otherwise, I I think we're a year away from making a decision on what, what, what we can do with that building until we get a master plan.
Well, a lot of that stuff sounds like just current staff can do as part of, I don't know what their workload is, because then we can. Or breaker panels and things like that. We have people that can do that. Give them a list.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you know, this is.
Right?
Hey, Dan.
Yep.
Yeah.
Pull this out with these things, things taken care of, and then this can get updated and those priorities, you know, those get, those get checked out, so.
Yeah.
Come in, intermediate, if you could.
Well, just one last thing and it'll probably be intermediate too, but. The data I'm looking at here is the last building project. So we went through, we didn't build any new buildings, but we added on, you know. We added space to high school, middle school, but we supposedly spent six hundred thousand on HVAC here. And we supposedly spent six hundred and twenty thousand on HVAC in the elementary along with. Two hundred thirty thousand for temperature control. I think that goes to Andrew's question of. Well, we still got problems. So, um, not for tonight, but. Um, I I would say take this nice work that you've done and for those areas that you've identified. Relative to HVAC is, help us with, well. What happened? Cause we, we intentionally spent a million dollars on the elementary school the last. Through four or five years, knowing that it may not be in use in three or four more years.
Sure.
So I I just, I'm sitting here as a board member from there that feel like, well, I may not have done my fiduciary responsibility here because. You're saying there's a million dollars worth of problems for what we've already spent eight hundred thousand on.
Sure. And I had asked this question before, was there any part of that? That HVAC project that was, that was cut due to funding or it was, this is what it should take to, okay.
We, we.
We wanted to heat the building.
We left that as a priority. So there was ventilation, improve air quality, quality and control humidity. There was uh, HVAC for the gymnasium specifically, old system requires replacement. And replace temperature control system, which I assumed was the whole building, address poor temperature controls in the building. I don't have any kids in the elementary. Andrew says, oh, it's, it's terrible. I'm going, we spent eight hundred thousand dollars. So you guys could help us reconcile.
I can speak to it a little bit. I was involved in the project, um, you know, and I don't know the discussions that were had at that time about the scope. Um, but hearing what you described about the assessment, just I want to outline that there are a couple of different systems that are parallel. That are under the HVAC umbrella. So if if at that time we weren't having failures with heat pumps. And this would have been designed, I'm going to say five, six years ago. Um, which is still reasonable because you're still in a window with like, I wouldn't say it's used up yet necessarily on the heat pumps and maybe on the edge. Um, but you're going to spend a lot of money to replace your ventilation system. And that's what a a big part of that project was. That's your fresh air conditioning, that's your dehumidification for the whole building. Um, and and those are a lot of the big concern items that that I heard you list from this, that's from a previous work description.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's a big piece that did get resolved and is is completely renewed, right? So it's your fresh air ventilation, fresh air for the classrooms. It's your ventilation levels and then it's the humidity control on that because the inside heat pumps don't control humidity, they control temperature in the space. Hmm, right? So it gets our humidity under control. The gym is a completely separate system. And then um, temperature controls was upgrading, upgrading the building control interface, how do all these pieces of commu- equipment communicate? And I think some of the frustrations are, you're still having a little bit of temperature control interface with the pieces that didn't get replaced. Those heat pumps, they, I don't think it's been a perfect marriage. I think that's been a little bit of frustration, but I think what's happening now is you're losing seals a lot of the heat pumps. For condensate leakage and then you're having compressor and fan failures that are, that are kind of. It's just we're hitting the end where some of these are fault, that they're just the compressor's family, you know? And so I think we're just, as soon. And so I think we're just, as soon as you start replacing compressors. That's the red flag. We don't know if it's fifteen years or twenty years. We've had heat pumps go longer and some of them last seven, you know, you'll have a heat pump after seven years and it shoves the compressor. And so it's as soon as we start seeing compressor failures and fan failures, you know? All right, we've got a problem. We've got to look at all of these heat pumps totally. Right? And so, you know, I, I mean, it's frustrating too, because I know you spent a bunch of money, but I don't think it was wasted money. I think it was just that it wasn't all encompassing the entire HVAC system. And that clarification, I think it's important.
There's a lot of stuff in here about window seals and exterior doors and things like that. Is that, is, is there enough in there that that can be causing some of these problems or is there? No, we're, we're past the scope of window seals.
I think it's age of compressors. I mean, I think it could be boiled down to that simple. You may have. Manufacturer, I think there are other variables surely, right? But I think. I think you're looking at an age window of a heat pump that it's getting close to that time. You know, I'm sure there are other factors. What your water, uh, maintenance is like. I think it's probably pretty good based on the condition of the rest of the district. You know, you guys are paying attention to what's going on for the most part. So I don't think it's an exact thing. I think it's just an age of the equipment thing.
Yeah, so, no, very, very helpful. If I put that into context, it's. We're nearing the end of the life of critical infrastructure. So as we look at master planning and we consider a new building and we consider potentially repurposing, we got to keep that in mind, right? It's not just a, well, we just move in there because it's ready to go.
Well, one piece, and I don't want to take too much time, one piece I'll add. That I'm thinking about as we're talking about the previous discussion, do heat pumps make sense to replace in a more lean and spilling for a couple more years? We do have a lot of bones in this building that are really good. Geothermal system is not going anywhere. Right? Your main pumping system, you might add VFDs, but generally speaking, a lot of the components of the system, short of just the heat pumps. Are in really good shape, right? And so it's not that you need to replace your HVAC system. And I think that's the other distinction is it's, it is specifically classroom heat pumps that are your current challenge. And that's not a cheap project, but you're not talking about ripping out all the ductwork. You're probably not talking about replacing much piping. And so relatively speaking, you still have a lot of good HVAC system there. That's worth investing in potentially, right? You've already spent money so you can find a use that facility. I'd be trying to. So I would, I would feel bad about putting money in the heat pumps, as long as they're going to stay similar room sizes in future.
Very good.
Glad you showed up.
Thanks for having the team here, Patrick.
Any, any other questions on the elementary school and we'll get to. Intermediate. I think the first one that I do want to talk about is electrical.
Sure, yeah, so this one was a little bit surprising to me coming over, so. The situation at the end of the day is that there is what we call a primary metering service, meaning that the meter. And utility service originates and is distributed from one single power pole on the eastern side of, of the site. It then goes underground to a panel box that then spreads out to softball, baseball field, a football field. And then to our buildings, right? So what's going on is that when they put those underground wires in. They didn't put them in conduit. They're basically just shielded wires. And so as we're going through, I'm hearing that you've been losing phases. A lot of those wires have started to degrade. I have no idea why or what purpose or who put them in, but it sounds like the entire system needs to be re-done. Otherwise, it's just going to be continual Band-Aid issues after another, so. And it sounds like there's already. The visitor side transformer, the football field's already down. It's not even being used anymore. I don't know what's going on in the baseball softball field, if there's any improvements there that's going to happen for lighting eventually. So there is some work that can be done in tandem with an overall system upgrade. So the recommendation there. Would be to go to a. Individual distribution points for each location. So what does it mean by that? It's by having a line energy come in. Do a design for the site distribution to do a new drop. For the building, a new drop for the football field and a new drop for softball. So you have three independent meter services.
And this is on page sixty of the.
Right now, the district owns, I'm assuming, I haven't talked to the line, but based on when they do this primary service. The district owns all the cabling underground right now and the district owns the transformer. So if anything, that equipment goes bad, it's on the district's responsibility to fix. If you go to a independent metered system at each site. Now, any of that primary wiring, any of the infrastructure ahead of the meter is now all the utility's responsibility. So it takes a little bit of the burden off the district. That would be a recommendation that I would look at highly for the future for this building. As a whole, in the building itself, the two electrical service entrances both need updated. Internally, there are one on the east side, even though it was recently done, it is using a lot of. The same infrastructure pathway of the existing utility was, which was down in the basement stairwell area. I, there was. Hard to determine what's active, what wasn't active. Labeling was not the best scenario. And there was no identification of where the second service in the building was. So there is a second service in the building, which is on the west side. Of the building and that service is in the shares, a mechanical, electrical, former boiler room. It doesn't have a main breaker on it. So if there is a fault, the main doesn't trip on there because there is no main. There's a obsolete, dilapidated pole outside. I have no idea if it's rated. Everything's shaved off on it. So I'm not even sure what it's rated for. So in an emergency, we need to cut power. If you need to cut power to the second service of the building, there'd be no way to do it. You'd have to shut off every single breaker until. You hit the one that you need to shut off. And the way, the way they did that was, it was acceptable by code because if you look, if you go over there and look at the panel. You'll see that there's six individual breakers in the main section here of the switchboard that says service disconnect. So there used to be called a rule of six. If you had six disconnects or less, you did not need a main. That's no longer the case now in new twenty twenty electrical. You need to have a main circuit breaker if you have more than six disconnects, which you do have in that panel then. So. That's, I know I went really fast and really bring it in, so if there's any questions, please let me know, but essentially the big. High level picture is that electrical is a very critical piece here for the renovation.
Ran right into it one of your first weeks, right?
That was that word. They said they sent me the something I had done. That's right, we lost the legs. We lost a leg. Who lost a leg? I didn't know what that meant. I do know now.
So the, the total on that, Patrick, for electrical for intermediates, eight hundred and eleven thousand, but. There's three different years to what you were just speaking about. I mean, what? Would that be all of that or it says two hundred sixty eight thousand for the first year?
I will let Patrick talk about the years. I didn't do anything with the years itself, but I will talk about the, the level of magnitude for cost. The site as a whole is a little bit different of an animal because it is a shared cost with utility companies. So if you did go with a single drop at each location, you would have to pay for the pad. And the secondary disconnect, which whether it be an exterior panel or a circuit breaker or disconnect, whatever. And then the conduit in between that disconnect and the transformer. That would be it. That'd be the responsibility of the district. The utility company is. The one that is responsible for getting the conduit, getting the conductors and the transformer to that location. So they would now take the responsibility. There may be incurred costs from the utility company because of that, but then that would be something that would be rolled into the district's utility program. Be favorable with, or, that's it, be negotiable with the district on that. Most of the time. Very minimal, especially since the service is already there and it's a somewhat rolled into your connected cost.
So the first ones that, that were identified as do within one year inspection, age nineteen eighteen. In there were those branch panel boards in the, in older ones, to getting those updated. So, and that's. This is all up for.
The branch panels are a different scenario. So there's.
Our electrical sucks. It's a function of.
When it was nineteen.
So there's, there's. Two manufacturers in here in the building of panel boards that are no longer a business. So you have, I believe. Federal Pacific and also at Frank Adams, both in here that are no longer existent. They're obsolete and they're. You can't find new parts or replace the parts from them. It's all going to be refabricated or. Just used to with it. Those only replace. There are other Siemens panels that are newer. Those seem to be in acceptable condition. There are square D panels over on the western side, uh, look like what was done for. Expansion and a mechanical project at one point. Those are probably ending the near end of life. I would say that they probably need to continue the maintenance, circuit breaker, cycling. And labeling, labeling is going to be the biggest one. Anything else?
Is that it?
Sorry.
Yeah, and that. That's what was identified and that's, you know, like a product of just that. Being added on to that number of times and then the different systems they get brought into it and.
I think the question about multiple years, I can speak to a little bit because I think part of the challenge is we're going through the building and assessing all these different things. And then trying to assign a priority to them with Patrick and somewhere to say like, all right, this is a need. This is a pretty soon need and they might all actually make sense to do as one project, not over three years. But, but where the needs fall and, and that's kind of the difference between working at the, the facility assessment software and. When are these things due? And then zooming out as a group and discussing, where does it make sense to lump these as a project?
It comes back to some different avenues and different variables associated with it because you could have. Panels that are obsolete, but there could be the feeders that feed those panels could be still in good condition and can be reused, but we can't see that until we get it to the building. Same with branch circuiting itself. There may not be shared neutrals throughout, but there may be. But then it comes down to what the local electrical inspector will allow for shared neutrals throughout the building. So again, it just kind of comes down right down to apples, apples. Numerous different avenues of approach during a project. Curious, because we're talking about maybe taking a big look at a lot of parts of the building and somewhat of parallel projects. I was surprised that. Cause I don't believe this entire building is sprinkled with crap, just the stuff that's.
Just recently.
I was surprised that neither here or at the elementary school, there was a recommendation for sprinklers. Is there? Can you speak to that or?
I can briefly. I mean, it's, it's a code issue and.
They're expensive. My guess is that that was probably a lot of it.
The benefit is during a renovation project, whether or not we come back with fire rated doors and fire rated wall penetrations and fire smoke dampers and ductwork. And, and so like when you're doing a renovation project, it has a big impact on other budgetary items. But it's not necessarily code required. It's just we treat those fire safety items in different ways. And so right now, there's no reason to go back and just put in a sprinkler system. If you were renovating a facility, that's a different discussion.
That we can speak of because there are municipalities like Des Moines that are requiring or at least trying to push for.
It depends, yeah, it depends on other things, triggers that may require it. But I, I think it's a larger discussion that it's not currently required to be changed. It's not currently needed. You're okay as you are. But if you were doing a large renovation, then it'd be something you have to evaluate.
And none of these would necessarily trigger that? Personally, I traded every fire rated door in the building for a sprinkler system, so.
Well, and, and this is all looked at independently. When you start looking at their bigger projects and then that would trigger. Once you get to a certain point, then upgrade and adapt the system, so.
Cause you know, most of the time, I mean, a lot of times with, when you make so many changes, right? You gotta come up to code and I didn't know if any of these would trigger that or not.
Size of the building.
It's definitely something that's been added on to projects, especially renovation projects that I've been a part of, especially when ceilings come down.
If there's an opportunity to run.
There's always an opportunity because why take something down again? If there is this desire in the future to have a suspension system.
Why maintain corridor full of fire dampers?
Right, exactly. And if you're, if you're thinking about what the cost would be, typically right now, we're looking at three dollars. Is what kind of the industry price has been for our suspension system.
That's a personal tangent.
Go talk to Iowa State and see what they think about their sprinkler systems. How they do with Ross Hall and just a few of the other ones. What else in intermediate? What else do we, that's not good?
So the basement locker rooms, so that. It's more of just a drainage problem. So you get some water down there, right? So all those downspouts. Outlet, right?
Probably like, maybe shouldn't be, but.
I see, I suggested backing up the cement.
Go to page five for the intermediate. So you can see that on that wall, there's three downspouts. And if you look at the concrete a little bit closer, it's sloping back. Into the building. And then on that corner where I have that straightforward picture that you mentioned to here, that's. There's a, it's starting to crack there, so. That water is coming back into your building and that needs a little bit more further investigation. At, at a minimum, we need to work on the, the drainage on that portion of the facility. And there's, there's other items that are just more aesthetics. You know, you have, just from my appearance, seeing that everyone parks or is sitting in line in this, in the street waiting to pick up their kids. Uh, if you go to the page four, those gutters and downspouts, you've got a bunch of. Build up on those walls, just some general cleaning, cleaning up the site on, just from an aesthetic standpoint. You're very proud of your facilities and you have great facilities. So when this, teachers or not teachers, the parents are sitting there waiting in line. That could be an easy opportunity to make them look a little bit better and, and do some cleaning. The north face of the, the facility I have in here, you know, just get that power washed and, and. Low hanging fruit that, that could, that can make the buildings look a lot better. And then the other items in here are mostly just aesthetics from the inside, the lockers that. Could be an opportunity if there was a need to maybe change those into some sort of educational spaces. I don't know.
Yeah, you mean like collaborative spaces. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and every, every school handles lockers differently. Actually, I don't know that we've done a one-to-one replacement on lockers of any recent project, but it, I mean. Depends on how you want to go about it.
So it could be an opportunity there. To be able to change just the long hallway feel when it's, it is a block long. You know, and then just being able to. Plan for and budget for repl- flooring replacements the, throughout the court, throughout the hallway and getting that done. The carpet that hasn't been done, it still looks really good, but it's ten to fifteen years old at this point. So when, when do you want to start budgeting for something like that? I know over at the middle school. Mr. Dana Center said that's starting, you know, we have three classrooms here and three classrooms here and that's a great way to do it. Making sure that it's in the budget and, and getting ready to go every summer. You're just kind of hacking away at it. Uh, window seals here, I, I would recommend getting those looked at. And especially over, when we get to the middle school, we'll talk about that, but those are kind of starting to go. You'll start, you're starting to see a couple. Failures in your, your glazing and. The seals will just kind of show up and just end of useful life and that's something you should start to take a look at. So. Bleachers have a line item in here for bleachers in, in both. So the original ones from the east side. Getting those upgraded to something newer and then the, in the west gym. The north bank hardly ever gets pulled out, but the south bank gets used a lot and those are. Getting more difficult to use. So that is just a line item. The kitchen, as far as the functionality size wise, obviously this was a high school, so it. The kitchen, as far as the functionality, size wise, obviously, this was a high school, so it is meant to handle a lot of. A lot of students and a lot of meals every day, but from an equipment standpoint, the staff feels like. They can use a little bit more in there, there, if, they said it was pillaged for the high school, I don't know. I don't know if that's actually the case, but, yes, yeah, so, uh, that, that's something, spacing for the freezer cooler. And Dan, Dan mentioned issues with the single condenser, that's a district wide problem of having troubles with. Maintaining temperatures between the two since they're on a, a single condenser.
Question, is cool.
It's just AC and some of the space, larger spaces, you know, like the gyms. And, um, and I specifically noticed gyms, um, you know, you have little things like the pumps are, are pretty aged. Eventually, but that's affecting your maintenance item, that's not a major product, right, so. And, and there are a few other, like there's a, a couple spaces where it'd be nice to add AC, that could be a small project. So maybe it's, it's tackling one air handling unit that serves a gym as a project, and so I think it's kind of piecemeal. There's nothing facility wide necessarily that jumped out, there's some water service entrance things. That also made the list, not a major priority items, but just like the electrical water comes from two places. So, so, and there's no valve on one of them, so there's some things where like, there's a maintenance issue that's gonna come up and it's gonna pan. So, let's get that fixed, fed back, fed from the other section. There's some money that you'll spend, but it'll, it'll make sense when it happens, it may just get, so it was anything major. That was a concern overall, so you've got a couple, I think warranty things, maybe with the recent, couple recent rooftops that are sloped improperly. Um, from a previous project, so there's still maybe ongoing discussion with. Another team, uh, people, but, um. I think overall, it didn't seem like there were major things jumping out from any track perspective. Just that desire to then cooling with these spaces and when it fits, you know, your larger plan.
Similar to our conversation on elementary, I mean, there was, looks like six hundred plus thousand spent on HVAC for this building.
Yeah, and you've got a lot of.
Address humidity control and improve oxygen comfort, but. Yeah.
Yeah, so you've got all the classrooms, they're all on a V two V system, there are. Two vintages of rooftop units on the roof, some are brand new and then I think some are a few years behind.
Yeah.
Um, and so obviously at some point that other batch of rooftops will need to be swapped out, but it looks like a, a lot of good upgrades have been done. Um, but then your, your major air handling units are in mezzanine serving both the gyms. And then the smaller gym, I don't think really has anything but corner heat and, and that's pretty common. The main gym usually is the, the larger priority and then the smaller gym kind of gets. Just exhaust system like we all grew up with and some steam heater on the front.
Yep.
So yeah, it. It's tough, cause HVAC isn't just a one line item, it's very piecemeal, so.
But you're making us feel better that we did spend some, your money went in the right place.
You don't have a lot to do.
Yeah.
It really is addressing those cooling desires.
Yeah.
And then some maintenance as, as different pieces of equipment.
And Stacy, I think maybe, I don't know if you were in here for the elementary uh, HVAC conversation, but basically what I heard was. What we did three or four years ago was all good, but we need to finish if we're going to, you know, use that. And I think one of the big questions we'll have is are we gonna repurpose it if we do go with the new ones? Anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the last thing I'll mention here, the restaurants. That. There's a smell. That could be looked into, uh, in the, the two, uh, east and, I'll call them central, that. Along with, along with aesthetic upgrades. When you got from the fifties and sixties, that, that would be taken care of at the same time to investigate what's going on and really. Take care of anything under floor, because there's no tunnels in that portion of the, of the building, which. Dan will tell you that's why we need to go to the V A D system, because any of those. The radiators, we wouldn't have been able to help. Re- replace or if there's any piping issues, that'd be a, a huge undertaking, so, um. Yeah, that'd be just in the, in the future, one of those things doesn't have to happen, but. If you're gonna get into it, you're gonna get into it.
You do have some abandoned heating components that are no longer functioning. But your overhead system is taking care of the building now in most cases, so I think it's a little priority, there must be a piece to pop up. A space that needs heat fixed or added, um, but most of that's an isolated area that can be accessed and maintained, areas that have really been abandoned. So it's all operating fairly well overall.
What's money we spent so far?
I tore a bunch of pages off.
Just take notes. Like I said, this is, this is just an interim.
Yeah.
That's good. Kind of what you asked for, right, Christine?
It is, it is. Thank you very much.
Go ahead in middle school then.
Yep, middle school.
We're getting newer now, so we're getting, we're gonna get better.
We're getting better. So, yeah, middle school, obviously. Really good shape, the educational spaces and the support spaces that go along with that are in awesome shape, the addition. Really, nothing, nothing noticed there for either of the additions. One, there's a couple of pretty big concerns with the envelope, so on page two. That first one I have is the CMU effluorescence, so. Along the east whole side of the building. There's some moisture issue that needs to get looked at, so moisture is getting into the walls and it's coming back into the building. So typically, if it was on the outside and not painted, you, that's that, the white kind of flaky stuff, so chalky stuff. Something's happening, we need to look into it and.
In this picture, it's, it's happening near openings, it's usually an issue with flashing around the opening, it's not properly flashed inside the wall.
Yeah, so I. It's just a red flag to say, let's, let's get into this and before it becomes a bigger issue.
And that's on the east side, you said?
Yeah, a lot of them that I noticed were on the east side, so up in the, up in the shop, up in the, or, yeah, the shop area. The, the band room, the choir room, along the whole. The art room, this is where I first noticed it, and so all of those classrooms in there. And when I was, uh, talking to Mr. Danielson today, he said that there were. All, on that side, there is also problems with the door staying open in big wind events, so, or doors getting. Opened and then water all over the floor and big wind events, so I don't know atmospherically if there's something. What, what exactly is happening, I was on Monday today, but that kind of leads into, there's a lot of building pressure and. Trying to forensically understand why that's happening and, and track that down to fix it so that. You are able to get extended life out of your building without these moisture issues in your wall. So then on page five, you'll see, and, so the first couple of these are just moisture problems, so. Getting somebody to take a look at these will hopefully solve most of them, like your window seals, those stone window seals. They're starting to crack and you can see some baying in them, and so. I don't know what an amount of time would be, but those are probably gonna start popping, popping out and, and chipping and. Having issues with those.
And that's the original, right, the two thousand and six portion of the building.
And then, the next thing there would be just recocking those openings, but first investigating what the moisture problems are. And then the window gasketing, so on page seven, you can see that that, you know, six, you have some gaskets that are. Falling out, which is also leading to the, the window units failing, so all the. All of the cloudiness that you can see, I think they're, I think the number was in the thirties. Number of panes on the, the, it's all the lower ones and ones right above the, uh, above doors that. Are having issues and would need, record, obviously recommend replacing and doing the gasketing at the same time, so. And then you'll see the staging of roof replacements and. Feedback from Dan and the roofing company that. Put the roof on, the section one here is the most critical thing to get taken care of, so that's why it's in the front. On page nine, you'll see there, there's some rust, so in the cafeteria along that exterior wall. There's rust along the roof deck edge. We need to figure out why that's happening. So, that's the same area where the wind is coming in and putting a bunch of moisture on, on the floor, so. Hey, we need to figure out what's happening from the roof level and coming down. Similar things are getting to the age where carpets getting, needing replaced, so it's already being taken care of, but. Noted so that it's in those budget items. Uh, page twelve is those, the window glazing replacement that, that I was talking about. So those, those are the main things you guys can talk to, or architecturally, and.
Yeah, sure, so, uh, electrically, uh, great infrastructure for both middle school and high school. Um, for power wise, I think it's going to be a lot of carryovers from the maintenance items from the elementary and. Intermediate that we've notified, it's gonna be the. Tamper resistant devices are gonna be needed, um, verification of labeling and grounding. Um, confirming that shared neutrals were not installed, that kind of stuff is probably gonna be the. Carrying over for the middle school and the high school. Uh, lighting, uh, is gonna be the next, um, probably bigger project, uh, for maintenance. Um, and overall efficiency for the building, um. I would say. That would probably take priority over some of the, you know, a lot of, this kind of stuff is small, it can be handled. In intermediate with maintenance, uh, however lighting should be taken over as a project, I know that. Uh, Dan has been entertaining different quotes for projects like that, I think he had mentioned that there was something for. Uh, middle school for LED lighting, um. I know he's been doing a lot of exterior lighting, uh, at the elementary and the intermediate, changing out, uh, to LED. So he has kind of been doing a little bit of that. Uh, but anyways, I think, yeah, the lighting components is going to be carrying over to those buildings. As a, uh, as an efficiency, uh, improvement option for the law. Technology wise, go ahead, uh, technology wise, I think you're also in pretty decent shape. Uh, it's just gonna be coming up to the renewal and confirming standardization of cable colors, grounding, uh. The equipment, uh, locations, making sure clearances are maintained, things like that.
Uh, HVAC wise, you're in pretty good shape, there was one issue that we talked about and, and that is that your geothermal system. With water temps in the winters is very low, to the point of concern, um, and I think I, we uncovered it through discussion during our walk through. We're on the middle school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um. What's happening, and I, I don't wanna delve into the details of where everyone, but, uh, essentially the main ventilation air unit of the school. Has a preheat coil in it that's attached to the geothermal field, and so during occupied times and it's very cold outside in Iowa. That's hitting your well field with a lot of load, that's not typical with a heat pump project, so the way that unit was designed. Uh, is, I think, and is controlled, is drawing down the temperatures in your well field on cold days, and so I think that's just taking a little bit of. The safety factor capacity out of your well field, it's working. But it's, it's in that range where we're on the edge of equipment operating properly, cause the water in the loops getting too cold, so. There are a couple of simple options, one is to modify the controls, and that's a no cost option. Um, to make sure that as, and here's the downside, but as it gets very cold outside. We're throttling down the outside air at that unit, so we're not bringing in a bunch of minus fifteen liter and in our well field, right, so there's a controls approach. That you would work with your controls vendor to modify and we can help with that, but it's pretty simple. The downside is you're ventilating a little bit less on those days, right, so your fresh air is a little less fresh in your classrooms. And you, you know, so you pay for it and just overall building health a little bit, so.
Humidity?
Uh, no, it's not gonna hurt you, humidity, it's in the winter, it's gonna be dry, it's just when we're all in here all day. Instead of exchanging the right amount of upper air, it's a little less, so our CO two levels elevate a little bit. I mean, you're still way better than a lot of schools in Iowa, so I mean, we're not, we're not committing crime here. We're not committing crime here, there's some, there's some leeway, we're just not code level ventilating when it's minus ten degrees outside.
And it's zero, so, at zero, so basically sub zero is when that's.
Yeah, we, we find a temperature around zero degrees and then as the temp drops, we start to reuse upper air during occupied hours. Right, so that's, that's the no cost or low cost fix, the, the proper fix is to probably add a supplementary boiler. So that when the loop field temperature drops, the boiler can kick in and help carry the building. So, but that's, that's a project now, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollars or something, you know, you know what I mean, so it's, it's not a huge project. It's worth considering and discussing, but you've got a couple of options to keep yourself running without any issue, so the only other thing I'll mention. Everything looked like it was in great shape, no signs of the, the problems you're having with like the elementary. But you're only about eight years, six, eight years behind probably the elementary heat pump age, I think. Yeah, I think these were oh six on most of them, the addition obviously is new, but, so you just gotta keep that in the back of your mind, that when you start having those issues. And whether it's that exactly the same year it was for the, you know, or if you get another ten years out of it, hard to say. So just, you know, in the back of your mind that you've got some heat pump replacements down the road, but it always out yet, you know, and call it a five year. Outlook, so kind of just check on it and see how it's going. So otherwise, everything looked great, I think just a few modifications and then back to the building envelope conversation. If we're dealing with controls on that ventilation unit anyway, it's a good chance to look back and, and just check building pressure and how that's operating, make sure it's not contributing to. Um, pulling in or pushing out a lot of air through proper building pressure control. So, some, some controls work, I think is the short solution. Questions on that, um, I think the only other thing I had jotted down was just the shop and some dust collector. Discussion about what's needed there, and then that's not a huge project, but I think that it sounded like those systems. Or do you think there's a discussion about what the goals and needs are versus what the equipment sector.
I think they're looking towards in getting those installed, so I think they're getting them by now, so. I think those are.
Yeah, and that's something that's really easy to do the better, like you haven't met us for that, a lot of those systems are prepackaged and simple, so.
That's the usage, we had middle schools considerably different than such a high school.
Yeah.
So, a lot of the cost and the, the funding sources, routes, things that are. Starting to be the end of their useful life, you're, you're this far into, into the building and it's just time to start looking for those types of things.
So just two cents, Christine, if and when we get to that point, which we won't tonight, but, you know, my opinion is we keep air circulating. I mean, we're hopefully at the tail end of this pandemic, but one of the, one of the COVID mitigations we said was keep, keep the air most. Throttling it down is probably not the right direction versus bringing in a boiler, right?
It was a good idea before this existed too, you know, and that's the thing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, is that, I mean, that's potentially gonna reduce the burden on the heat pumps too? At a certain, at a certain point.
Yeah, maybe the temporary measure and then looking for.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have any more below zero days in. Zero, done with the pandemic and no more zero dollars.
I like it, I like it.
There is a flywheel effect, you know, a, a couple of cold days don't hurt, but, but it's just a danger of. What is your inlet temperature and heat pump allowed before all of a sudden you have a classroom heat pump that's not heating? And so far it's worked, it doesn't, it's not an emergency, but I think it's something that is an operating idea, like. But more ventilation is better than that. Yeah, it'd be worth it to keep it running.
Yeah.
So for the, the high school, not just a couple of things that do need, I would recommend getting looked at very soon. Uh, because I think the warranty on some of these items is probably gonna start. Ending, so out at the. The weight room, the curtain, the curtain wall system, the way that it's sitting on that sill, and you can see on page two. We should probably look into if that's causing any issues, what those issues might be and getting that, getting that attended to before. Uh, the warranty period is over. So the other bigger one I'd say, so on the, the north side of the. Uh. The athletic director's office, that was so, there's an interior called EFS there. And it appears that when that was installed, the, they caulked the bottom. Of that, which is not good because that doesn't allow water to exit. And you can see in the pictures. That it's causing, it's causing the. The face of that to fall off. In some areas, it's causing it to bow out at the bottom. And all that's doing, that's just held moisture in there. So looking back to see. Look, I guess, looking forward to figure out what we need to do now to get that fixed before it is all of. Your, as you say, like to follow up. And then there's that too. So then you can see the, the new, the, the new addition to the high school. Also has a similar detail to that, but you can see that it's, it's done correctly because there's a gap there. So that's. That's the, those are the two kind of envelope things from when it was constructed to take a look at. And then the loading dock lip is now from what Dan says unusable. So they pull over that. The one that's sitting on the wall, you know, that's a very nice thing to, the, the hydraulic one is awesome to, to have there, but like it's not used. Or can't be used, but isn't good. So looking into what the problem was and potentially getting it fixed and then. It comes down to keeping that out of the weather. So what, what solution could there be or is that something we follow? On the. East elevation. There's a couple of refrains that are like fifteen feet near, and you can see that's causing a little bit of erosion. Uh, that we could probably take a look at.
There's just nowhere for the water to go, just.
Well, is that an emergency of, you know, it's not the actual stuff. Yeah. Yeah. So there's, there's a couple of those. So just, and that's low hanging fruit. It's not, elephants. There's no big issues, but it's.
Something I shouldn't think of.
Yeah, yep, yep.
We have a drain issue in the north side of the building. That was, that was that fixed, the one on the, on that north entrance that they had a drain that was coming out right before the doors at one time. I remember it was first.
That was middle school.
No, it's, it was the high school. It's the back entrance to the, to the um. Right, sorry, yes. Was there ever, did we ever get that fixed? Okay, I remember at one time I was, that was.
Only other issues, there are some doors in the new addition for water and so we said, I think. I think it might be a sweet issue.
Sure.
Trying to repair the switch multiple times, but I never seen the. You can ask someone to like, well, just write water stall. You know, a couple of different areas, but I think from what you've talked, the story, I think that's a minor. Prepare. Some of the other items.
Sure.
You set now with Dan then and try to prioritize some of this. Is that the next step?
That is, yeah. So I've been talking with, I've been talking with principals and uh, Dan will be in there, but he's gonna be in there. So. Yeah, getting it, everyone, everyone, I thoughts on where, where this needs to sit will then take all of this. Get them in the right order and then that will be the final, yeah, the final piece of this. So.
Is high school good and electrical?
Yes.
All right. And HVAC is good?
Yeah, we're good on HVAC, that multi sector or he's had some ongoing things with his work interview, but it's a maintenance thing.
Okay.
Um, so you know, I, I don't think I think later was jumping out of that on the chemical side.
There's some control issues right away that took a while to settle and.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a lot to dive in here. I think just again, this, this is perfect Patrick. Thank you for doing this. I think we just gotta now sit down with our team. And just figure out what we can, what we can do internally, what's prioritized, how, what we, we have to go higher to get done. And then start to figure out where our plans are going forward, especially with the elementary intermediate, what that's gonna look like. Some of those items fixed. The electrical thing in my mind, well, that was the number one immediate building. Cause we, we've had issues right here for a while. Yes. Yeah, we own transformers. I don't, I don't make any sense in that school, but.
And that seems to be like a timing thing, like there's only certain times you can do a big project like that, not just interruption.
Yeah.
I mean, for, for me, it all kind of. So this could come right out of that apple. And, and you've got some there. So it doesn't need to wait for a large project, but I think some of these are dominos that we should have a really good picture of what our master facility is. We're gonna repurpose some buildings, whatever. Um, but the one I would agree, which I'd encourage, just keep moving forward is on the electrical for this building. Yes, that can't imagine us not meaning or wanting to do that. And that's not to say we wouldn't do many of these things, but. My approach would probably be, I'd kind of wanna have the bigger master facility picture.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, that's first.
Yep.
It's the first C in our.
Yeah.
And then gives you that bigger picture on this maintenance line and what that means to look like and, you know, when you're. Your financial numbers that, so that.
Yeah.
Will be helpful.
So the other thing that, and I appreciate you just driving this, bringing this forward. It's really good, but you also talked about, we talked about. So that there be, I don't know, if training, but just sort of an, a maintenance plan. And we got new folks that came in and they, they uh, inherited systems that. Were already here. I mean, is that part of this too, where can help our staff with, okay, this is how this should go? Some of the training aspects or. Is that any component of this?
So this can go to the point of. Putting those in priority in the right here and understanding that law to be moving forward. So that the overall facility condition is, is improving over time, not, not holding flat or, or getting worse. So you have that good picture of what that was like. But then, yeah, it comes down to what is the initiative? How, how far do we wanna take this? Is our, is our goal to, to just hold our, to hold a baseline or, you know, how much, what do we really want to improve? And how does that fit into the bigger picture of larger capital improvement projects of elementary school?
And I'm kind of thinking more about, you know, controls and HVAC and all that stuff. Or do we? Is our staff comfortable with it? Is there things that we need to still learn and to understand how to best utilize what we've got?
Sure. From the training standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Yeah, sure. I would just say that, you know, is it just Dan right now who's taking care of most of it? So.
The custodians of the building, but Dan.
Right. So realistically, there, there is a retirement uh, sunset period on his involvement with the district. And so who's going to take over his responsibilities on how many different mechanical systems we have? Boilers, BAF.
He's a well, yeah. Yes, we too, I mean, we were in McCoke, I was going through the high school this morning. Uh, so we've been on the road all day, but uh, the difference from school district to school district, we were pleasantly surprised at the wealth knowledge. Dan carries about all of your facilities all in his head. And so I think it's important for you to not lose that. And, and you know, as you start to see him ready to potentially move on is that you've got somebody trained up. Ready to go, you know, and I, and I think also the process that we've gone through here. Is starting to formally document a lot of that knowledge. In a way that it doesn't go away when he leaves and he's got the reminders built in on one of these systems and maintenance items. And right now we populated at a pretty base level that encompasses important things and, and medium sized components, right? But there's nothing saying you can't do that on a more finite scale to say it's filter changing time. Now it's right and, and have some of those more intentional items that are more maintenance focused than master planning focused.
Especially for systems.
There is built into that.
Especially for systems that they're not getting a lot of training for anymore. So like boiler systems, for example, right? I mean, especially the holder waters.
Yeah.
There's, there's not as many um, people who are gonna be able to perform maintenance on them. And so any of the knowledge that he has putting that down. Uh, in some sort of, you know, formal training manual is.
It's like the facility is very.
Yeah.
That's right. Just one car accident.
Do not get.
That's right. Don't say that. It's true though. That's where that succession plan.
Or just a team, right?
And the team, that's right. That's why you, we have, as we continue to grow and our buildings and our needs and our kids, like we started this conversation tonight. You know, the support for that also grows, you know, that we need that additional support. And, and we'll continue the conversation, which we've had um, previously, for example, you know, we've talked about, well, how many people does it take to mow? This many acres that we now own, you know, and the way we've been doing it has been working, but. But we've got people mowing it, you know, I don't know. I'm gonna say nine o'clock at night, but I know it's not always like. You know, but I mean, there's all kinds of hours. We're watering twenty four hours to get the water going. And that's one person doing that. And so we have to start thinking a little bit differently about that. So that we are maintaining, whether it's grounds or whether it's the building um, in the best that way that we can. So we'll have to continue to, you know, keep drilling down.
And the cool thing about this is it's, it's live. It's not just, hey, here you go, but. Yeah, at the end of the year, say, hey, what, what did you guys do? What, how much of this did you take care of? All right, that's done. Let's work towards next year and see what, what those next pieces are. So that's what's really cool, what I find exciting about this. So.
Nice job.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming all the way from McCoke, or wherever.
We're, we're from Des Moines.
Oh, you had a little bit of travel.
Yeah. We love coming here.
Nice choice of shirts.
Well, we're touring every building.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I try to wear a hoodie every time I go to the house.
I love it. I love it.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
No, stay.
Thank you. No, you're good.
Okay.
You've got some work in there.
I know we have a lot of work in it, all of us.
That's good.
It's hopeful to get.
It's really good.
Here's what happened, like sure, the point that I can, you know, and Alex probably appreciates, you know, some of the questions you're asking about.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the thing. The amount of work in this is pretty incredible.
Next item, uh, I might turn it over to you Tyler, since you're on the facilities committee, just talking about the facilities master planning RFP. That we have sitting in our Mox.
Yes.
I think we talked a little bit about it last board meeting, uh, but we have not really rolled it out there yet. So you just wanna hit on the purpose of it?
Sure. So in the spirit of continuing to grow and what do we need for facilities? Our last master planning, I just let Josh have a copy. It was a little over five years ago. And it served us very well. We had a very thorough assessment of all the buildings with interviewing just and, and, you know. Not just facilities, but programming. And we had some, I think some unique additions that we had, the CTE, the band. Expanded band and, and some unique uh, additions to the district. With the enrollment and discussions where we're at, we're saying, well, what's next? And my suggestion for the board is that we commission another. Master planning and that's, this is master facility. What we just went through was current facilities, but. We commission a, a master facility plan. And that with that, we would expect that there's considerations for what's going on for programming, what the staff. And, and for that matter, the community expects over the next five to 10 years or, or more. And, and it could build on what we did or it could say, you know what, we're starting fresh. And so with all that said, just provided Christine with an example of an RFP. That I think you've worked up as a potential for us to consider and basically put out a proposal for um. Put out a request for proposals to have organizations that would be interested in doing a master facility plan to. Uh, submit those proposals and let's kind of figure out a timeline to bring in perhaps three. Plus or minus one to interview and the timing I would suggest is. If we're comfortable with that, we could, we could get that RFP, RFP out sometime. What did we say? Next month or?
Well, we can, we can release it.
End of this month, yeah.
I mean, we could release it. If you just agree on the dates and vote on it, we could release it. Um, whenever you wanted to. Um, just a couple of things. So what I did is I took the RFP, I kind of explained this last time that Tyler gave us a sample. And, and just um, you know, put it here and uh, we highlighted the things that needed to be modified, meaning the dates. Um, and then I went and researched many other RFPs because I thought, well, maybe there's something that somebody else asked for that we didn't ask for, that this one didn't ask for. They're pretty standard. I really didn't find a lot of differences in the different RFPs. The one thing I did, and I'm gonna try to find it, is I added the word later in the section about collaborating. Um, with our partners, I don't know if that's how I quite phrase it, but I know I use the word collaborate. And what I was talking about there was um. Exactly what we saw earlier tonight. I wanted to be sure that, I know I use the word collaborate, so thank you, Gail, for looking.
Not found.
I didn't use the word collaborate. All right, I'm gonna have to find it. Yeah, I spelled it wrong probably. Um. But I did talk about our partner, so. Maybe partners, I know, probably. But that was the only piece that I thought, I'm gonna add that in um, because we had this work already done. Um. Oh, okay. I don't know if that's it, just a second. Um, but I did add that piece because I wanted to be sure, I didn't want them to just give it to us without seeing the work that had been previously brought forward. So um, we're gonna find that.
An approach to work, yeah. Demonstrating their ability to work cohesively with various stakeholders.
Okay.
Involved in long-term, long, long-term planning efforts.
Yes, that might be.
What is the number?
That was um, three hundred criteria for selecting quality. Sounds similar, I don't know if that's what you meant.
Yeah.
So what's the timing again on this? So we'll save it, we'll reset this month, you know, March first. What would the timing look like Tyler, in your mind, uh, regards to?
I think we put a date in March where we say that's when we want the proposals. There'd be either our board. Our board or a subset of our board with Christine that whittle it down to three.
Yep.
And potentially already late March or early April, we bring those in. I, I would say just do it as a separate work session. So that's what we do that night and. Um, if we're comfortable, we pick one that night.
Okay.
And so that could be, let's say by sometime in April.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would be nice because if there's gonna be much for interviewing with staff and all, you at least get a little time before everybody disperses for the summer. But then the timing would be, I think, expectations is that there'd be a formal report to the board. Sometime fourth quarter, early, early October, November.
Yeah.
Where we accept the report, which that's an example of what we did at, what, twenty seventeen, I think is the date on that. And um, it, it could lead us right into a bonding um. Committee and we look at bonding in this, a year from now in the spring.
Twenty-three.
Um, it could help us with the discussions we had tonight of, well, we, yeah, we're gonna re, we, elementary is the priority. And we're gonna repurpose the building based upon all this information. So yeah, let's go ahead and do the HVAC in the elementary. But, you know, I, I just think that there's no, to me, there's no reason to delay. On getting the information, in other words, commissioning the master planning, we can decide when we get that report, how fast or slow we move on it.
And like you said, summer's coming up, so you wanna get.
Yeah.
The staff are getting involved.
Is that timing that, is that the timing we talked about?
That is what we talked about. We did, we said April, yeah, we've talked about it, uh, you know, early April as much, so that people would have time. Uh, April and May before they left and then, um, and then um. Yeah, so we could release it as soon as you wanted to. Um, and then.
Are we spec?
Are we specifically, under the criteria, are we specifically weighting these criteria or are we just, just evaluating? I, I don't know. I'm, you know. Given the, I guess, your experience with these RFPs before in this world, but is that something that we need to do? Or is it gonna be clear enough that we can just kind of? Thirty thousand feet, look at, look at their proposals and.
As far as like in section three, do we put a matrix or?
Yeah, should it be weighted at all or is that not really necessary?
We, we didn't last time. Let's not say we shouldn't this time.
Did it cause issues? I mean, no.
Okay. If I remember right, it was pretty much, uh. Last one, it was, it was overwhelming. I mean, everybody had the same.
Yeah.
Consensus at the edge of the meeting.
Yeah.
So sometimes you get so many different proposals, you know, releases that are so close, or maybe there's a little bit of this between the people that are proposing. And if that's not an issue, then I just didn't know, cause I haven't done that in this world yet.
And in my, oh, sorry, go ahead. In my research, they were pretty similar. A couple of things, um, and just for the record, I found it, I had it under consultants. One point one, um, consultants for facilities review and enrollment specialists. Because I thought they should also make sure they're collaborating with the information we have at business. Um, anyway, um, and so the only other piece that I, that I will say also in my previous role. We always put in a piece where they worked contractor in the classroom, where they worked with students to help create projects that went into the. Into the part of the planning, some of the math, some of that. Um, I don't think we're at that level yet, so we're not ready for that. But because as I went through and researched other school districts that they had used for master planning. Um, they were pretty standard. So when you're talking about the evaluating a rubric, I didn't see that, but I also. Um, that might be part of part two, like we put this out and then the rubric comes, uh, as the evaluating criteria later. I don't know.
Yeah. And I'd wanna make sure that we're specifically adding the city in that too. We're unique in that for such a small town. Every school district building is within two blocks almost.
That's right.
Yeah. Someone would kill me for saying this, but what if they come back and say, hey, let's do our own water treatment system and a water tower, you know, for the school district? I doubt it, but.
Yeah.
I've heard dig a well come up at a board meeting.
Yeah.
Can you scroll down, uh, to one point four? So I'm wondering, I had some notes, sorry if I didn't share them with you previously, Christine, but, you know, we, we've done the enrollment projection, right?
Yeah.
So do we ask them to redo it or do we say, as I think you were alluding to. Review the findings and recommend accordingly, or do we wanna have them redo it?
Let's have review it and kind of give their opinions. I mean, there might be some glaring errors they find too. I mean, I don't think we can do it, but I think.
Compared to current, I think, at least, cause I'm skeptical of just seeing the housing. I know I've said, you know, the housing development. It never ends up materializing what, like what you think it will be, but.
And that's what I thought we previously discussed, is just to let them go ahead and do it while they can review the things we have been, have.
And you got a comparative.
Um, but I think that's what you had said previously, so, um.
Good, thanks for telling me what I said. The other one was in one five, um. We have end determination of eligibility for state funding. I'm not exactly sure what that refers to. I mean, we've already worked with Piper Jeffrey on what our bonding capacity is. What else would this be?
Grant funding, is there grants or something?
Oh, there's always, um, you know, there could be some grants out there. I mean, I've been around enough where there used to be. The fire life safety grant, but that never longer is around. And there was the, uh, some other grants, but. I don't know of any current grants, uh, but there could be some. I don't know.
Do we?
Probably just leave it then.
Yeah, I was gonna say school facilities, do we ask, uh, that? Is that not?
I mean.
So you, I mean, today's twenty first, if we go back to the schedule. Um, I mean, you're saying yet this week or tomorrow for that matter, put it out. We have a board meeting on the seventh.
Can we get spring break right after that?
Spring break, so maybe have them do at the end of spring break such that when we, we start assessing, I mean, that would be.
Yep.
Hmm.
March. Well, if they were due in March, and then we have them, um, ready in April.
If they're due on March eighteenth, which is the Friday of spring break, then when everybody gets back, we can see, hey, we got. Five or we got ten and we whittle it down to three and.
Yeah, I like your idea, Tyler, having the facilities committee, maybe whittle you and Jeff and Christine kind of. Maybe shorten that list a little bit and then bring them finally, as a board, we're gonna talk about the final three or four, or wherever you decide.
I would prefer the Monday after spring break because if they are bringing in boxes of this kind of stuff from here.
Here.
Um, or if they have questions at the last second.
Yep.
We're here.
Five, like five o'clock on the.
On that Monday.
Deadline for submissions would be March twenty first then?
Yep.
Yep. And you'll let figure out deadlines for questions that don't make it over spring break, obviously.
Yeah.
What was the deadline for submission?
Twenty first.
Was that okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
And then we could, like, the following Monday, the twenty eighth, do some interviews potentially. I mean, I'd say on here, but tentative dates for interviews and. Then that would be a school board meeting on the eleventh of April, right?
Yep.
I mean, I'd move it along.
Yep. Good.
So submission for questions is questionable. Uh, deadline for submission is March third, twenty first, five P M. Interview of potential firms, uh, March twenty eighth and school board meeting on the fourth, or April eleventh.
So we interview, so when would you whittle that down? That's pretty tight to go from twenty first to twenty eighth. I mean, would you guys meet then that week, Tyler? And then.
Sure, we could say April fourth.
Yeah, maybe push that back a little bit. Yeah, just give it a little bit more time.
For the interviews.
Yeah.
Okay. And the deadline for questions, I would make it the Friday of maybe noon on, uh, the Friday of spring before, for spring break.
The eleventh.
That's enter this day too, I know.
Yeah, so maybe noon.
February eleventh.
Yeah.
And that way.
March eleven?
March eleven.
March eleven.
March ten.
March ten, noon.
Yeah.
March tenth at noon.
Yeah.
And then we change the interviews to four, four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then still keep it on the school board meeting on four eleven.
You got it. Yep, that's what we plan on doing on it. Do we have a motion of approval? That RFP?
Is Alex still on?
I'll move.
Oh, Alex! You're a trooper.
That is great. I would end up wake, wake, oh, I'm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
No, it's just an aye.
Motion passed. Uh, the last couple of items, we have the next meeting is again, March seventh. We moved it early a week because of, because of spring break. So March seventh, six P M, following by March eleventh meeting, or sorry, April eleventh meeting is six P M. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alex, go back to vacation.
We'll do it, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.